Okay, we've got the recording going. Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming. We're gonna start the meeting and I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance if we could. Ready?
We're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. The delay really throws me, but nonetheless. I feel like I'm rushing. So we've got a few things we've got to go over tonight. We've got a couple of zoning board applications that we need to go through. I don't know if we have any bills, Mary. We have to go through the budget because the budgets are due already. But Mr. Rosen is joining us tonight. Just so everybody's aware as well. Melissa Maroney is interested in the recording secretary's position and we've asked her if she would like to just tag along tonight and see how the meetings go and just get a sense of how a typical meeting goes, good or bad, however it comes out. But just to get a sense before she goes in, anything completely blind. So with that being said, Mr. Rosen's coming in tonight. He wants to talk about Vincent Street about he's got two lots that we're holding for him before he puts a cash bond up. And I'll let him explain if he wanted to know if he could get another lot released and we would hold on to the last lot. But Mr. Rosen, if you want to address the board and say any different or add anything to that. Yep, we've got no audio. You're on mute. Sorry. So there you go.
Am I muted now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, I haven't done a lot of these Zoom meetings, by the way. At my age, I'm technically inept.
It's a new telephone.
First of all, thanks for having me. I mean, this was rather late that I found out that we wanted another lot released. So I'll try to make a long story short. At the very beginning, I asked for three lots and you released lots one, two, and five. Then I came back and you released lot four. So now what I'm looking for is lot three to be released. You know, when I did the subdivision only being six lots, it was hard to which lot would sell first, which wouldn't go first, but we needed to get some release to get moving. We now have someone, we have one house built that we're closing on Friday. Actually, there'll be people living up there this week. They're starting another foundation in two weeks and now we have someone buy lot three. So what I'm looking for is lot three to be and the fact is that this just came up morning. So I didn't, I haven't presented paperwork to Mary. Would probably be at the next meeting that would actually sign off because I don't need it. It's going to take that long to get everything in line. So what bottom line is I'm looking for lot three to be released, which leaves which leaves lot six. So it's public record. I'm selling these lots for 230,000, 235,000. I'm selling them all to Jack Ridden. Well, to the department. The contract finish the road is $39,595. If you add in the as-built bounds and all that stuff miscellaneous, total to finish the project is probably around $80,000. On top of that, I paid a substantial amount of money to the town to run the water line. Remember, there was the whole issue about that whole mess about the town water. Like, end of the day, I did not run it in off of Vincent Street. I ran it in off of Plymouth Street. So there's a large expense there and we did some easements and stuff like that. So what I'm looking for is simply lot three to be released with you holding lot six and I would not come back and ask for that lot without posting, you know, a number that we would figure out somewhere around $80,000 to $100,000 in cash that I would post for that lot.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments that they would like to address? Okay, so what I would be looking for is exactly this is I would need a motion to release lot number three once Mr. Rosen has the paperwork. So we'll vote on it tonight and we'll follow up with paperwork and and Richard, when you get the paperwork done, if it's done in like a week and we've already voted on it, Mary can actually just try to get us to come by and sign the paperwork and we could try to get that moving. It could be the next meeting. It could be between now and the next meeting. So it works out.
It's the Form E, the certificate of performance. And I'll fill it out and I'll just get ahold of Mary in the next couple of days and get it to her whenever I get it back. Just knowing that it's been released, we can move forward with all the legal stuff.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to release lot number three with the understanding that we're going to hold lot number six for the valuation of the estimated bond. And at such time that Mr. Rosen's looking to release lot six. Ten piece engineer on this one, right? Yeah, yeah. Just what I would suggest is have Ross Engineering call them out. Have them come take an inspection so they can reevaluate the actual bond estimate for the cash you would have to put up to release the last lot. So if anybody would like to make that a motion, just say exactly what I said or say, repeat it.
I'll make that motion and ditto to what you just said.
Sheila is making a motion. Mary, you got all that, right?
I sure did.
Okay, any further discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Elaine, okay. And all those in favor? So I have to take a roll count. So Elaine?
In favor.
Elaine is in favor. Lonnie? Lonnie's in favor, but she's muted. I saw her lips move. Sheila?
I'm in favor.
Sheila's in favor and I am also in favor. So that is unanimous vote. So that lot is released, lot number three, with us holding on to lot number six. And like I said, once you're ready to release lot number six, just have Greg go out there and do a reevaluation of a reestimate for the bond so that, you know, we're not putting too much of a bond on it. It's a just amount for what needs to be done out there. He can check things off the list. And when you do get the paperwork together, get in touch with Mary and then what we'll do is we'll just try to figure out a way to get to her and sign all the paperwork off. So technically legally, you're released.
Right, well, that's, and that's all I really needed. And thank you all very much. Can I have one minute?
Sure.
So if any of you have heard the rumor, yes. So I wanted to address this with the board because you know how rumors are. I did buy Jamie's. And no, I'm not going to be doing housing there. And it probably won't be a restaurant. I know that everybody has it all figured out what I'm going to do with it, which is amazing because I don't know what I'm going to do with it. But I bought it for two reasons. I mean, it's no secret. It was going to auction. It had been closed for a long time. I went to the auction. I was the successful bidder. One, to protect myself from another restaurant opening there. And two, for the value of the real estate. I mean, it's a very large, it's a 1.2 acre site. So in case you hear rumors that there's going to be a housing project or a restaurant, the answer is no. For me, I will not be coming to you for that project to build housing or another restaurant. I just wanted that to be out there in case you had heard the rumor of whatever.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, if there's any questions, otherwise, thank you all very much and good night.
All right, have a good night, Richard. Thank you. Mary, do we have anything else that we were going on for an agenda?
Just all the ZBAs in the minutes. That's it. We didn't have anything else.
I do have Article Two, the budget request and recommendations. Our normal budget or that we do each year is $4,400, which includes clerical and expenses. Clerical is usually 4,000 and expenses, we usually have it at 400. It's been like that, I think, as long as I've been on the board. I don't think it's been a lot of change. We have done salaries. What I'm looking to do is increase the clerical to 5,000. Actually, 5,001.75 to be exact. Increase the expenses to 600 for a total of $5,602. Really kind of rounded off. It's 5,601.75. So it's a difference of $1,200 more or less from what we do normally. Now, our budget comes from our revolving account, the fees we collect from developers and applicants. So we do not use taxpayer money. We do not take it from any other board. But we do still need the financial finance committee to approve it and it goes on the warrant for town meeting. So reason I'm asking for what we're asking, mailings and stationary and, you know, general expenses, we may not use that, but prices go up. And we should at least cover ourselves in the event we have to do anything like that. As far as the what was that thing we did? The bylaw for the flood map, we were, I think we ended up paying the expenses for posting that meeting. So there's some things that we end up absorbing as our board. The clerical, what I'm looking to do is so I'm looking for an increase and it's an estimated amount of hours that someone would be working. And I'm also thinking that, you know, if we offer the position to Melissa or somebody else for the position and Mary's overlapping, gonna have two people getting paid. So I want to at least try to make sure that we don't cut ourselves short from the end of the year, but try to at least account for all of that. So what I would need is a motion for approval of our budget for the amount of $5,601.75 for the year 2022.
5,000.
5,000.
So you wanted 500 for the expense and what was the clerical?
The expense is going to be 600?
Oh, 600, okay.
The clerical will be 5,001.75. Yep, and then the total would be $5,600, $601.75.
Okay.
And I'm going to send that to the person who's going to be the accountant that Frank had indicated in an email.
Yep, Ken.
Ken, yeah.
Okay.
So if we're all in agreement, I would just need someone to make a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Lonnie's making a motion. Any further discussion? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Sheila. Okay, so Lonnie?
In favor.
Lonnie's in favor. Sheila?
In favor.
Sheila's in favor. Elaine?
In favor.
Elaine's in favor and I am in favor. So that is unanimous. Okay, so we also have zoning board applicants, applications. What is the pleasure of the board to look at Old Colony Road, Mayflower, or Bedford first? Go ahead, Elaine. You're gonna say something.
I was gonna say you can pick. We don't care.
All right, well, I have Bedford open and what I will do is I will see if I can share my screen. Let's see, share screen. The one that says share screen. All right, let's see how this works. So right now you should see the application. Tell me if you can't see it.
We can.
It's 864 Bedford Street, which is the car dealership next to Enterprise Rental Car. Type of district A2. Proposed building is the type of structure. Maureen Foley is the applicant. Owner's address is 864 Bedford. When did you acquire this property? Currently under purchase and sale? Has application been filed with town clerk? No. Has previous application been made? Yes. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, 66-5. Dimension table for front setback, rear setback, max maximum lot coverage, and then 77-2 site plan submission. Sorry for going so fast through this, but there's a handful of pages. There's 10 sheets of drawings. Let me see if I can zoom out. Some of it's just normal coverage.
Eric, can I ask a question? On that first sheet, the number of the location doesn't agree with the not that sheet, the next one, sorry.
It says 864 and 878.
Yeah. 864 is the location we were given on the first page.
And this here is 864. This is the Muni mapper, the assessors map. So it is 864. Let me.
It's actually both.
Oh, they're looking for taking that house down too. That was the house that that was a house that burnt down like a dozen times, wasn't it?
No, I don't think they're. I don't think they're taking that house. They are.
They are looking to take it, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it says existing to be demolished in the shed.
There's a help on the property of Martinado already.
There is, yes. This, this is the house right here.
Yeah.
I can, Elaine, if you want.
Okay.
Sure.
So 864 is the big red house that you see. And 878 is actually part of what is the parking lot and the little office building. There used to be a house on it and they demoed the house a long time ago, but the actual address of half the parking lot is 878. That's why you see two numbers.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a look at the plan.
Burns' house.
It is not.
Okay. Then let's see what we got here. So this shows 878, 864 and 878. It shows the setbacks here. So front setback is 30 feet, side is 15, rear is 40. Maximum lot coverage is 80%. Minimum structure coverage is 25 and it should be a maximum of 1,800, 18,000 square feet. So the front and rear setbacks are what they were talking about, but so this is the red house that Lonnie was talking about. This is another building and this is that lot for 878 where the existing house is over here. If I'm moving on to something and you want to look at it, please stop me.
I do have questions too.
Yeah.
One question is, and this was brought to my attention by Dennis. He pointed it out to me. So that's why I'm asking.
Sure.
So the opening for the driveway, I think it's clearer for the opening size on your next plan, the next one down. I think it says 29 feet. And I was just wondering where the opening on Route 18 for another development, I didn't know if it mattered, development versus retail establishment. But we were told by somebody at the state level that the opening off of a highway being Route 18 had to be 50 feet. And I see that opening as 29 and I didn't know if you knew anything else.
I think you're right. I'm not sure what the dimension is, but if you go down to Paradise Gardens, you go down to Stop and Shop, you go down to Walgreens, those are all much larger openings. I don't know if they're 50, but they are larger. So I think they would have to comply with state regulations because that is entering onto a state roadway.
Okay. And then I also didn't know if it made a difference to us to know this in advance or not, but where it's going to be a liquor store, do we have to know if the town even has a liquor license to give?
Doesn't, we have no jurisdiction on that. That's up to the selectmen.
Right, but I mean, what if we approve it and then it turns out they can't get one, then what?
And they did it for nothing. So they must have a good inkling that they could probably get it.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they will. It's a, it's a business decision that they have to make. So if we approve it or if we recommend approval and the zoning board goes ahead and approves it and then the selectmen say absolutely not, we don't want to give you a liquor license, then Plan B, whatever else they were planning.
Okay.
You know, one thing that I did look at and I just did it more or less on my own was I took a look at the state and the state talks about proximity to a school. And we do have the Conley School over here. And it talks about, and we need to understand exactly what the law refers to, but it talks about per the shortest highway. So it would be roadways is a distance of 500 feet. It has to be away from the, the school. I think this is, you know, looking at the field, if you were to include the field, I don't know, I'm not sure what the measurement would be. I would have to take a good look at that. But I mean, this is 100 feet right here. If you look at the scale in the lower right corner. Now, if I have to follow the road to get to the school to make that, it's definitely going to be more than 500.
Right.
If I were to go as a crow flies, it still might be more than 500, but I think that is something that would have to be considered. So in our motion, we can bring that up, but it's, it's going to be basically general highway business. And it is in an A2 zone and a lot of Bedford Street, the frontage on the roadways are usually general business and I think it was like 100 or so feet in is where the zoning differences were. So a business like this needs to get relief from residential to be able to put in general business. So this is the layout. It's a proposed door, which is my eyes aren't as good as they should be, 6,000 square feet. They got parking here, but do they have enough parking? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. 18, 19. I would have to take a look and see what the parking requirements are. I don't have my my zoning book with me. That's in my office. It doesn't do me any good here. But we'd have to look at, do they have enough parking spaces for the scrap footage and the employees as well? They might. So scrolling down some more, now they're showing some of the utilities. So they're putting a leaching galley in here to try to capture all the rainwater. Showing the parking lot again. Landscape schedule. So they're going to put up whatever these are bushes. Zoom in a little bit.
They're red dots.
They are. So rhododendrons and hydrangeas, I think. So RX and HQ. RX is rhododendrons and HQ are hydrangeas, which might, it might be all right, but I mean, hydrangeas don't like a lot of heat and Bedford Street will throw on some heat, but they will find out. And then they get into some of the foundation details, the anchor bolts and the light poles and and things like that. The leaching galley. So this is, this is it in a nutshell. So what they are looking for relief on is only, well, site plan approval is one. Now, looking at the plan, they do put a dumpster over here and it's enclosed as it's required. They look like they're doing their loading dock on the left and business parking on the right. They do, they are looking for the relief here, which the rear setback, and this is the back of Enterprise, which they're not in business anymore. They've basically closed down. But the rear setback they have is 16 and they need 40. The side is 25.4, but they need 15. So they meet that. The front is 22 and they need 30. So they're short on the frontage. They're short on the rear. And the percentage structure lot coverage is, it exceeds 25% of the lot.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, you can.
So those striped lines, are you saying those are the loading docks?
Yeah, loading zone, no parking right here.
And so the front of the store is right where the loadings is like the middle of where that loading starts, like.
Well, this is, this is just the roadway to get back into or drive into. So how they're actually going to do it, they may be backing out onto Bedford Street or they might be doing, this is called a hammerhead. So they may pull in and then back, but if they got an 18-wheel, that's not happening.
Right, that's gonna be tricky.
Yep, I know.
And if somebody, if a smaller vehicle like a van or something is loading to the front of the store and going through the front doors, that's going to probably block the, the, the field of vision for cars entering and exiting as well. And you know, with snow, of course, you know, 2020, I don't want to jinx us, but probably going to get a ducie or two at the end of this year. Sorry to say it, guys. But no, truth be told, like, you know, snow piles up on these corners and between, you know, if somebody's parked right at that end, that hammerhead side of the, the front area of that loading dock and you're entering or exiting, can you, can you see around that vehicle? And any other overgrown hydrangea that might be there or, or that sort of thing?
Well, you're absolutely right there and, you know, what is the plan for snow removal here? I don't, I don't see one, but my guess is they're gonna push snow back to here. They're gonna push snow back here. Because there's not a fence. This, I think, is just curbing, but they'll push over the curbing. I don't see any proposed sidewalk.
Excellent. It's quite a bit of, of what is it, juniper? Junipers and maybe some rhododendrons. I'm not quite sure. It's hard to tell on the landscaping plan. So it'd be hard to push snow right on top of that.
So that was the one with the red marks and am I going in the wrong direction? Here we go. So the sides, you're gonna, you're absolutely right. You're gonna have trouble here. You're gonna have trouble here, which I wouldn't want it piled up here. I would not want it piled up here or here. JV is junipers. So they are doing a lot of landscaping that would be problematic if they're going to try to push snow. This is the only spot I see and this is another spot, but now you're pushing it up against the building, you're pushing it up against the property line. It's not fair to this butter. So they have to have a plan for that, I would say.
Yeah.
But.
And I did too. Yeah, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, and just the other thing is too, we have to make sure that do you, do you have your zoning book to be able to see how many parking spaces would be required?
Yeah, I started, yeah, I started looking up and I got distracted. What do we got? 66? What section is that under? Let me see. I gotta open up the.
I don't recall what section it is.
665, probably or around there.
I want to say that it's under the site plan approval section. I could be wrong though. Erosion control nodes during winter construction. That's all that is, is construction. Erosion control nodes during winter construction. That's all that is, is construction. I'd be, I'd be curious as to if there's any wet. I don't think there is any wetland there.
I don't know, but if they get the 18 wheeler, a driver that backs up at Dunkin Donuts, he'll be able to back up there. They back it up so tight at the one next to town hall.
Yeah, that's a difficult one. I don't know how they do it.
I've watched it. It's amazing.
I'm sure the driver that gets lucky enough to get that store curses.
Oh, I'm sure.
A few times I've seen when there's a substitute driver, you can tell.
Yeah, I think it's wet back here, but that's the eight fifty-six Bedford. Meadowbrook comes in from. The old, um. Heat hole. Works his way down.
Under the parking spaces, is it under general business or?
It would be general business, yeah.
It says one space for each 300 square feet of gross floor area.
So. 6,300. So it needs 20 parking spaces.
Yikes, do they have that?
They do not. Um. One, two, is this a parking space? Yeah, it must be. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19. 20, they just have 20.
Wow. Okay. Without your snow.
Yeah.
Well, I can't control the snow.
No, no, but I mean, if we're pushing snow somewhere, there's might be the limit of some spaces.
Yeah. Hey, I know where there's a lot where it's a lot bigger. Used to be a restaurant. I'm just kidding. I am just kidding.
I heard it's not going to be apartments or a restaurant.
I know, I heard that too. So, do we have any?
Well.
Comments or questions, or do we want to make a motion to recommend?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it unusual that we would be approving or denying on something that somebody doesn't own yet?
Nope. It is a plan that is brought before us and there's an applicant on the, the owner of the property is, um. Doing it on the premise of the PNS, so it's probably a conditional sale. We have done that before. It is more about the property, not the owner.
Okay.
Now, this property has come before us and it came back for. Expansion of the car dealership once upon a time. And it also came back because the zoning board denied their application. And they needed to come back and show up substantial change. And what they have today at that car lot is what that substantial change was. I think it was less cars, less parking spaces or whatever, and buffers and push the cars back away from 18. Cause they used to be right up on the, on the road. All the used car dealers do that. The one down the street's doing it again now after Bob had talked to them about it. So we have a motion to make a recommendation?
I just, I have a comment. I don't know if I have a motion, but I have a comment for maybe more, um. Uh, discussion. This is a brand new building. It's a complete tear down. They create, they're creating their own hardship.
Thank you.
I, I have a hard time, um, recommending approval when. It's a brand new building, creating its, a, a brand new hardship. If there was. If they're trying to preserve an existing structure to be, you know, cutting down on waste and unnecessary demo, that's one thing. Then we can kind of work with that, but it's a brand new building. Like, it's hard for me to recommend approval on that. Um, but other than that, I. I don't love the, um, the, the zoning, uh, the loading zone, um. How close it is to the street, um, with the possibility of, uh, parking. Um, I don't love, um, the potential for possibly overgrown hydrangeas to. Impair the view of, of line of sight, uh, entering and exiting. Um, I mean. I don't know. I guess I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. I don't know too much about the loading zone because we don't get a ton of these. Um, and how big it is. So I mean, this actually might be okay to say like the zoning board. But, um, you know, this is, this is just, you know.
This is, can you see this sheet 100?
Yeah.
This is a proposed building, the store. Uh, this was sent by Mary earlier. So there's a loading area, the office. All the shelving, you got the walking cooler, beer cave. Bathrooms. Um, so I mean, this is what they're proposing on the inside. It looks like it might be a cookie cutter kind of design, but. I can't say for sure. But I agree with you. Self-imposed hardship is not a hardship we should provide relief on. You know, I hate to sound hard about it, but you know, they could make the footprint smaller.
They could make everything work on their zoning.
Yep, and then all they need to do is get site plan approval. Um, they still would have the percentage of structure on the lot. Which this is, looking at this, you're probably somewhere around 50. 55% of the lot. I'm guessing. Um. I mean, what is the lot size? Does it even say?
Um.
Yeah, with me, I'm just gonna scroll, so if you get dizzy, I apologize. Up, 23.
Yeah, 23 required is 18,000.
6,000 divided by 23, 359. So it's a little bit over 25%. So I mean, I could. It's just a little bit over. I guess, I mean, I could probably live with that, but the front and rear setbacks, if they made the building. Compliant with the front and rear setbacks. Which 40 feet is a lot. I will say that, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's. I mean, realistically, they could. They wouldn't need any relief if they met this. And they met this. Because this would now become smaller and be less than 25%.
Can I ask you a question, Eric?
Sure.
Um. Where the front door faces Route 18 and where there's a potential for tractor trails. Or something pulling in and out. Do they require with the zoning board that they have like those, you know, those concrete like pylons?
Bolids?
To prevent anything from coming through the front door?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any requirement for that. You run into that more with utilities. Like National Grid, our prime example is the transformer and generator at town hall. You could drive a tank into that and you'd never touch them. Because there's so many concrete bollards outside of that. Um, but they're making it so that the general public won't cause problems with it and get killed. Really what it comes down to. Here, I mean, you could put bollards up if you were concerned about that. Uh, I don't know of anybody ever driving into that auto dealership. So that house is right on the edge and the sidewalk, so. I don't know, not, not that it would never happen, but I don't know of it ever happening there.
I just didn't know if that's something we would look at or if the zoning board looks at.
Um, the zoning board could actually ask the. Public safety officer. I don't know if they replaced him since Harry left, but. Uh, Harry used to get involved in a lot of things when you had intersections and whatnot. He would give his, um, his two cents on that as far as what he thought. I know he did down at the Rotary when Lyons was doing the development down there. So he went down and sat there and watched traffic and tried to figure out what the pinch points were.
Cause the reason why I mention it is I do know they have them at Walgreens. And I know that Walgreens kind of had a loading kind of area like that where they were coming around the building and it's really tight.
Yep.
Um, so I didn't know if that was.
So. At times, places like that, if they have a truck wrapping around the building, they will put them there so that. At, at, most times you don't know who you, who's driving the tractor trailer and how they're judging it. And if they were to scrape it along the building, they'd probably do more damage, but if you have them do it to the pylons, even if they push the pylons a little bit. They, they still protect the building. Sometimes they actually have curved metal pieces on the corners of buildings because the trucks hit them so much. So.
I guess one of the things that also bothers me is the handicap spot. Where they have to come up the, I'm not saying that I am an expert at this, I'm not. Um, but I'm just curious where they have to come up to the front of the store. And then there may or may not be something backing up and they can't get out of the way fast enough. That's another thing I was looking at. Cause I wasn't sure how the trucks would be backing in near there.
So these guys will be doing it over here. The trucks will be over here. That's where they're supposed to be. The handicap spots over here. So if you're a patron, you're coming in here.
Right, and you're coming halfway up and I didn't know how far these trucks may be backing out.
Well, these trucks shouldn't, you know, that, that's a. Even if you had it. Uh, all laid out. I mean, this is not, it's not like the trucks are wrapping around the building. They don't have the turn space. So I would almost guarantee that they are going to be backing in at times if there's an 18 wheeler, because he's not going to pull in. Cause if he pulls in, his doors are back here and they do him no good.
Exactly.
Loading area is here, so they're going to need to back in. So they'll tie up traffic on Bedford Street to back in. There's definitely something that'll happen there. And depending on what time of day that is, that can get ugly.
Yeah, and, and one of the reasons why I mention it is because not all trucks are tractor trailers. So you could have a tractor tailor tying up the space and then you could have like a little 20 foot straight job. That's trying to get in and out with his little bit of whatever. And I just don't, I guess I would feel more comfortable if there was no striping in front of the building at all and that. They couldn't back into the front of the building at all. And I agree about it.
Yep. Um, I mean, I think you need to understand what they intended with that.
Sure.
That, that's part of it. Um, but let's think of the worst part of this. Say I've got a box truck. He's unloading in there. And I have a tractor trailer that just pulled up.
Mm-hmm.
Where does he sit and wait? He's on your street. He's on your street or he's on 18? Waiting for that space to open up.
Or he could be sitting in that parking lot somewhere.
He could be.
Yeah, true.
But you know, those are things that. It's difficult and they can be brought up in the motion. But, uh, they are difficult to police, you know, operational things, but. You can at least bring it up in a motion or recommend it in a motion. To the zoning board so that they can take consideration to. You shall never have a truck waiting out on Route 18. And if they're in violation of that, you have to have Bob go down there and write them up. You know, so it's a condition of their approval if it gets approved. You know, they may look at this and say, no way, no how. Um. I, I. Honestly, I, I, I don't know that they would, but I can't speak for them at this point.
Right.
So I mean, right now it's a car dealership and it's expanded car dealership. Uh, it's a matter of what's a better use of the property? And if it is a better use of the property, does it meet the requirements? So like Sheila said, a self-imposed hardship. Should never ever get any relief. Because it is self-imposed. The hardship's not there. Hardship is size, shape and topography. It has nothing to do with finance. It has nothing to do with, I want to get X amount of extra square feet on a piece of property. So I'm going to ask for relief. It is, um. You know, this could be. Looked at differently. I mean, they could potentially put parking in the back if they, you know, for all the employees. You know, and get enough of the setback there, maybe even make it a little wider. I don't know. Um. I'm glad that I'm not seeing, you know. Perpendicular parking coming in, in the front, so people will be backing in the 18. I'm glad that's not being shown. Cause I wouldn't go for that, no way, no how, but I'm not in favor of. You know, self-imposed hardships either.
I see a lot of potential with this site. They could come up with other designs, make it work.
So with that. Do we have more questions and comments, or do we want to make a motion and move on to the next one? Cause again, it's just a recommendation. It's not an actual vote for what's going to happen, but.
Right.
So I can start it if someone wants to take it. So I guess I would say. I would recommend denial on the premise that. The relief sought is a self-inflicted hardship. And other considerations in the design should be made. Such that they don't look for relief from the self-inflicted hardship. As well as other concerns. Uh, what is the traffic going to be like with? Loading and unloading. Uh, where tractor trailers will probably have to back in. Um, what is the plan for snow removal? Um, should there be more than one handicap spot? I think that's what I would put down. So if anybody would want to take that as a motion.
I'll make that motion. That's, uh, that's everything that I feel about this and plus two, this is, uh, I need to publicly announce that this is a refreshing. Set of plans, guys. This is the most detail we've seen in a long time. I'm, I'm pretty excited to read these plans.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know.
It's awesome.
This is, this is like work.
Yeah. This is awesome.
Wait till the next one. Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Lonnie. Alright, so Lonnie, your vote?
In favor.
Lonnie's in favor. Elaine, your vote?
In favor.
Elaine's in favor. Sheila, your vote?
In favor.
And I am in favor, so it is unanimous. Alright, so let me close that one out. Next one it'll do is Old Colony. Uh, he opened the same thing twice. So Old Colony. Let me zoom in a little bit if I can. Old Colony is, are you ready, Mary?
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, residence A two. Type of structure is a proposed addition. Owner's name is Angela Jocelyn. Owner's address, two Old Colony Way. When did you acquire the property? 2018. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is required, section 6, 6 dash 5 variance. So. What do we got here? It's a pie-shaped lot. So for zoning, a pie-shaped lot has no rear setback. So if anybody is interested. It only has front setbacks and rear, uh, side setbacks. There is no rear in a pie-shaped lot such as this. Um. So they're looking to put a proposed addition on right here. Which is 13.58 by 24. Uh, and put one in the back. Which is 32 feet by, appears to be about eight feet. And this engineer actually put the side setback, so this encroaches a little bit on the side setback with. These bump outs of the addition. So.
Easy. I don't see anything wrong with this one.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, this one, it's.
Just like a smidgen over, like that's, that's okay.
It is a little smidgen over. It's coming into the property where it's at nine point nine feet and twelve point four feet. Um, you can make the same argument that it's a self imposed hardship. Or you could make the argument that, you know, this is an existing structure and it may not. You know, be a detriment to the neighborhood, but you could make the argument that the relief sought is because of. That I'm thump, the size, shape and topography of the lot. So. You know, what other choices do you have other than building out the back? Now you build out the back, you lose windows and things like that. So this is an addition that's going off the garage. My guess is. And I, and I'm with six, six dash five is probably in law accessory apartment is probably what it's going to be. So.
Well, they're converting a garage into an in-law with the additions. Should they be including the existing garages part of the addition addition because now you're creating an actual livable space versus just a carport.
We're. We're, we're making the assumption that they use in the garage is that space? They don't have it in the application. They're just saying that they're doing a proposed addition. Elaine?
Well. I think, I think common sense says that they're doing that because that addition would be so tiny that I can't imagine that would be livable space.
I would agree.
I, I agree too. Unless it's like a, like a man cave loft above it or something and they're fireproofing it, putting it into. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. And I'm kind of talking out loud here.
Oh, and that's fine.
I don't. I think we need more of a story here to kind of make a recommendation or denial at this point. Cause I, because I mean, I do believe that if, if it's an existing garage, it's changing the use of that space that is adding square footage to the house. And if that's the case, that is more than double the existing space. It's not just putting a second floor on it, adding a whole nother.
And the accessory. Structure. For use as an in-law, as long as the house maintains the appearance of a single family. Is allowed and there are other things that would have to be done. Bob would have them. Uh, do the fire protection and everything else. So there's, there's actually building code that they would have to comply with. And make modification to the existing to be able to utilize that as living space. Um, but again, we don't know what that is. We don't know what.
Yeah, we need more of a story. And um, yeah, we need more of a story in order to make a recommendation or or.
Yeah.
Anything at this point.
It only says they wish to construct additions to their property that will not meet the side set, meet the side setback of fifteen feet. They're not telling the story. So. Um, I guess with that, if you want to make a motion of no recommendation, yeah, that would be what we'd have to do. And just explain not enough information.
Yeah, yeah, I think that will be my motion. I mean, I, I hope you can hijack every motion, but I mean, that it, it only makes sense. I mean, if they had a story and if they were actual legit. Proposed additions and they had some space that they were looking to achieve. I mean, it doesn't, it, it makes sense. I mean, I would have no problem with it, but. You know, who knows that they're converting that garage? I don't know. And there's no, um. If that is turning it into an in-law, then we have to look at driveway space with uh, parking and we don't know. How many cars can sit into that space, although we could probably do some math, but it should be all in the plan.
So.
So we're making a lot of assumptions about nothing. So recommendation for no approval.
So, so that you're, you got a little, a sense of what's happening here is. This is the property right here, two old colony. It looks like a cape with a two car garage. This is where one of the additions are going on and the others going in the back. And again, like you said. Uh, not enough information really to discern what's happening there. So. I understood you correctly. Sheila is making a motion for no decision. Based on lack of information as to what applicant is trying to achieve. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Is it possible that the addition on the side of the garage is another bay?
It could be. We don't know that. But we're, we're assuming it's a, it's an in-law of some sort because we don't have enough information. That's typically what we see. It could be an expansion of the garage to make it a three car garage.
Yeah.
And the back could be a sun porch that they want to sit out there. We don't know. So, you know, rather than saying we reject it. You know, a no vote is more or less saying, we don't have enough information to vote on it intelligently to help or help the town or. Help the applicant or both.
Yep.
So, okay. So we've got a motion by Sheila. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Elaine and let's go through Elaine. Your vote? Elaine's in favor. Sheila?
In favor.
Sheila's in favor. Lonnie?
In favor.
Lonnie's in favor and I am in favor. So that's unanimous. All right. Let me close that one out. And the next one is Mayflower. So. Mayflower application is.
Whoa.
Fourteen Mayflower Circle. Type of district is A one. Type of structure is an addition. Owner's name is Andy Witkowski. Own is address is fourteen Mayflower. When did you acquire this property? It was August of twenty twenty. Any previous appeals been made? No. Don't know if he filed with town clerk because there's nothing there. Uh, section of bylaw which relief is requested in-law relief for, really reason for asking relief, special permit for an in-law. Okay. Who?
Yeah.
The existing dwelling size is, I don't think as big as the two additions together.
So there's two additions. Yeah. I mean, this is just enormous. Um, I would imagine that the shed is going to go away. Um. This is. The engineer didn't, didn't date it legally required to date the stamp.
Is that addition on the side or the back?
So this is Mayflower Circle here.
Oh yeah. So it's on the side.
So let's see. Flower is, sorry for zooming all over the place. Yeah, this is off a high street, right down the street from me. Uh, let me see. Let's have a look see, shall we? Zooming is tough. So this property is. Fourteen Mayflower Circle. So he's right there on the. This head, I think. So there's a lot of trees there. Yeah, that's the property. Um. Yeah, gonna meet. The side setbacks are twenty feet. Rear setbacks are fifty meets setbacks. Well, yeah, you got the rears there because it's. You got the rear and the sides, the front is thirty eight. Uh, so all the side, all the setbacks are met. It looks as though they took care to try to at least do that, but. Statement in the in-law by law is that the property must maintain the appearance of a single family. And. You know, this could be a two car garage with the in-law above. We don't know. But it's, it's much larger than. What a normal in-law would be. Um, it's doubling, maybe even more than doubling the size of the, the existing house.
Getting plans like this is extremely frustrating because it doesn't tell us anything.
No, that's. That's why, you know.
We got no story, nothing.
We, we should require that all submitted plans require the applicant to. These come before us, but the problem is, is we make recommendations so they don't really have to. Their story is told at the zoning board. But nonetheless, um, what would be the desire of the board on this one?
No recommendation due to no information.
Okay. So no, you make that as a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make that as a motion yet again.
Mary, Sheila's made that as a motion. Any further discussion? Anybody want to add, subtract, comment to? No? Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Elaine. Uh, okay. Sheila, your vote?
In favor.
Sheila's in favor. Elaine, your vote?
In favor.
Elaine's in favor. Lonnie, your vote?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. So unanimous. Okay. So those are all the zoning.
I have a general question. How do we get, how do we get more information? How do we make this madness end? Cause it's a little bit of a waste of everybody's time if we can't adequately um, provide the zoning board with uh, with our thoughts and a good. Solid um, recommendation or anything.
Simplest matter I think we could do is we could ask of it. So we could. Make a motion to send a memo to the building inspector's office. Copy the zoning board. And request that all zoning applications that are submitted to the board. Uh, we request that the. Um, building official. Request of them to add a little bit more detail. Or present themselves before the planning board. To review their application for a motion. On their application.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think the latter, um, you're, I mean, I, I think anything that they provide us will be better than, than what we're looking at. I mean, I get why they put in a bunch of red lines and some. Dimensions. It's save a couple of bucks because they have no idea if we're going to approve it or deny it. Uh, or, or the zoning board for that matter. And I get that. Uh, I value, I value that and everybody's time, but um, you know, we, we just, we can't, we can't provide.
Um, even on the zoning, even on the zoning board, I mean, this here, one of the requirements that they would be asked to do is show what it would look like. Show me that that's going to still look like a single family home. You know, and we've had them do a lot of view sheds, basically showing what the house would represent. Uh, might be somebody else's house, but nonetheless, we, we recommended that a lot of times when um, in-law applications came. So that we could at least see what it's going to look like or plan to look like. Um. Not a big ask.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at something that I received. You guys can't see it right here. I've got it in my hand, but I received this quite a while ago, I believe from. Planning board, could have been zoning board because I was on that too for a bit there. Um, and it's guide to preparing site plans. I don't know if it's. I don't see a section number listed. I don't know if it's uh, something, part of our, our zoning bylaws. I believe there is a section that um. We should be holding everybody accountable to, but we don't really do that. What if we include this list to when we, uh, to Bob when we write this, this, this letter?
Well, Bob is aware of it, but what ends up happening a lot of times is someone who might be doing a, a simple in-law addition. They don't get surveys. And they might, they might just be hiring somebody to do a quick sketch on a, on a plan. And it might be a tax assessors plan or maybe a mortgage deed plan. Um. And, and so there's, they're saving money by doing that. So they're not following all those guidelines, but we also have engineers and surveyors out there. Avery is one of them who refuses to submit a proper site plan. He will submit it on eleven by seventeen. Uh, without showing neighboring properties and. You know, we've told them numerous times rejected because of this, but. You know, sometimes it's looked at that, hey, the applicant doesn't want to spend. Five thousand dollars to do the neighborhood survey, just wants to put a deck on the back of the house. So that gets kind of weighed out sometimes, even though we do have rules and regulations. Now, a developer ends up having to. Go and buy the planning board rules and regs to do the streets properly. But we've had developers come in and say, I didn't know you had those. It's like, you just go to town clerk's office, Mary, I'll get you one. So it's ignorance doesn't buy it, but you know, you look at the scale of things. I mean, it's like. Sheila, if you were to put a screen and porch on the back of your house right now, you're going to probably spend a lot of money on materials. You're going to probably spend a lot of money on someone drawing up plans for it.
Oh yeah.
I, I know I have a twenty by twenty area where I can do it. Why do I want to go get a survey?
Right, right.
You know, I mean, it, it protects you at the end of the day in case there's a, a, an adverse possession claim against you or something like that, but. But still, you know, you, those are things you think of is, why would I waste the money? I'm already going to have it. I gotta spend money elsewhere. So you got to keep that in, in consideration is the. What is the proposed thing that they're looking to do? And it doesn't warrant a site plan like this. You know, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll give, I'll give the engineer the benefit of the doubt. They, they did it in red, but they didn't show a demo plan. They didn't really spell out exactly how they were doing it. Is it one floor? Is it two floors? This could be three floors. We don't know. All they're showing is a footprint.
Well, that's when um, somebody representing the client or, or the client themselves goes in and, and presents. Uh, their, their objectives to us. I mean, then, you know, we could use that and their, their, their stories to kind of form an opinion. So that, I mean, at, at minimum, I mean, that's free to just show up is free. So.
Absolutely. And that's, that's part of what we're looking to do with this memo. So. Um, so we've got a drafted memo for the building inspector. Um, do we hear a second on that? Anyway?
Okay. If you guys don't agree with me, I'm on a roll today.
It may not do anything, but at least we go on the record of asking for it.
I second it, but can we, can we be specific and say we'd like the size of the existing house? Cause I've found that in a couple of things. Where we didn't have that.
Um, so that would be a modification to the existing. Um, or modification to the motion is to add in more detail, particularly. Uh, any existing dimensions.
So um, to that, on this, on this plan here that he still has up, uh, top left hand side, I actually missed this. Um, before, but it does include the existing dwelling square feet, which is nine hundred and sixty square feet and the. Uh, proposed addition. But to your point, you're, you're absolutely correct. I, I, there's been times where we missed this.
Yeah, but I mean, it should. If we could put linear dimensions on it, you know, and, you know, the deck is a ten by ten, the back of wall is like thirty eight feet. The sidewall is a twenty four feet, whatever that might be. That's helpful to get a perspective on some things too. So. So we got that as a motion.
Can I? Before you finish your motion?
Yeah.
Um, just one quick thing. I, I, at this point, I don't quite remember if we're, we're denying this for, we're approving, what are we saying? We're lack of information.
Lack of information. So we're not making a recommendation.
Right. And, but yet you had mentioned previously how we denied many a plan for lack of information because this one certainly doesn't show neighboring properties or driveways either.
Mm hmm. Exactly. So yeah, we're not making a recommend, well, I mean, we could deny it because the plan is insufficient. Um, we could make no recommendation because it doesn't have enough information. So that's kind of. You could pick one or the other on something like that because it doesn't have enough information. Sometimes telling the zoning board, you do not make a recommendation. information. Sometimes telling the zoning board you do not make a recommendation is, it could be as determ- detrimental as a no. So. I mean, what's that?
Do we really believe that?
I do. I do, because it kind, it, sometimes it's a shock and awe. But if we can ask them to put more information on the application, not that they will, but at least put it on record that we're asking for it. Sometimes it could be helpful. So, that's what we're trying to do here. We've already voted this one, so that's already done. But it's now the memo to the building inspector. So. Let's give it a shot.
Let's give it a shot.
So, do I hear a second on that? Lonnie?
I'll second it.
Lonnie's gonna second it. Okay, so.
Hold on. So Sheila made the first motion, but then we modified it by Elaine, and now we're seconding it.
We, we, we more or less, she suggested it, so we modified Sheila's motion to add language to the end of it.
So, the motion is Elaine seconded by Lonnie?
Motion is Sheila, seconded by Lonnie. So, now I gotta go across and say, Lonnie, your vote?
Approved.
Lonnie's in favor. Sheila?
In favor.
In favor. Elaine?
In favor.
And myself in favor. So we'll send a memo to the building inspector, copying the zoning board. Next line of business, I think, is just the minutes, unless someone else has something else. I think that's all we got.
Yeah, I submitted my complaint to the complaint department. I said I submitted my complaint to the complaint department already.
So I was not present. So you guys have to vote on it. I have to abstain.
So are they okay, Sheila? No, I thought you said you had a complaint.
Oh, no, 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 I already, oh, no, I already, I already had my complaining session about the, uh, we need more information, darn it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I thought you were talking, I was reading through these uh, meeting minutes. I'm like, uh, yeah, I guess, I guess, I guess they're okay. I have one more line, right item to read.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's all good. It's all good.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes is been made by Elaine. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Lonnie. Oh, I'm sorry. I saw, I have small screen off to the side because I'm sharing, and I saw Lonnie's head going up and down, and I thought she was talking, sorry.
No, no.
So. I will, I'll do a roll call vote, so Elaine?
In favor.
I'd get that wrong if I know. So Elaine's in favor. Lonnie?
In favor.
Lonnie's in favor. Sheila?
In favor.
Sheila's in favor, and I am abstaining because I was not present. So three in favor and one abstention.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other business? Excellent. Okay, so Lonnie, what do you want to say?
Much to adjourn? Before, uh, hopefully we haven't bored you to death, Melissa.
You're on mute.
No, not at all.
It's not always. Sometimes it's more exciting than this. This was a lot of detail tonight, but uh.
It was pretty interesting, actually.
Okay, as long as you're interested.
You learned a little bit about what might be going on on Route eighteen at least.
This was probably one, this is probably one of the longer Zoom ones we've had. Um, usually we have like one application, a bill, you know, one developer might be coming in. So, you know, we did have a lot of detail for that liquor store application, so uh, we had a lot of discussion on that. So, when we meet in person, we tend to run a little bit longer too, so.
You know why?
When the selectmen get out of their meetings, they come down and talk to us and the town administrator and, you know. Nah, I'm kidding. Okay, so, with that being said, um, and hopefully, you know, you have the conversation with Frank this week, Melissa. I'm sure he'll, he'll probably reach out to you this week, but nonetheless, we'll see where that goes. But thanks for joining us tonight. I hope it was interesting. I think you got a little bit out of it. He was calm, don't worry. So I don't hold everybody up. I'll just ask for Lonnie to make her motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn made by Lonnie. Uh, do I hear a second? Who made the second?
Sheila.
I was trying not to hijack all the motions today. I was trying to like, give us pause for Elaine. Yes, I.
So, seconded by Sheila. All those in favor? Elaine?
In favor.
Elaine's in favor. Sheila?
In favor.
Favor. Lonnie?
In favor.
Lonnie's in favor, and I am in favor. It's unanimous. Meeting is adjourned.
Sheila must have got a lot of sleep because she's awfully peppy tonight.